Welcome to Tuesday Cafe. I'm Sean Canaan and we are broadcasting live on July 23rd from the studios of WMNF in Tampa. And there's so much news to talk about this week that we're going to let you weigh in later in the show about the race for president. Over the weekend, as you know, President Biden dropped out of the election and endorsed Kamala Harris to be the Democratic presidential nominee. I'm wondering what people think about that, so I hope you stay tuned and get, we'll get your thoughts organized and we'll go to the phones later in the show. First up though, we're going to talk about one of the biggest local stories of the year. A major redevelopment project was approved by the St. Petersburg City Council on Thursday. It will reshape the historic gas plant district and the centerpiece will be a new stadium for Major League Baseball's Tampa Bay Rays. Everyone has thoughts about that as well, so you can drop us a line at dj@wmnf.org. You can text 813-433-0885 and I'll read the best comments on the air. And our guest to talk about this, this hour is St. Petersburg City Council member Richie Floyd. He was one of three council members who voted against the deal and we're going to find out why, so welcome to Tuesday Cafe Richie.
Hey, thanks for having me.
I'm glad you could come on, you know, before we get started talking about the Rays stadium deal, the redevelopment of the Trop site, maybe I should ask you what your thoughts are about President Biden dropping out of the race for president in 2024? Would you like to share your thoughts?
Yeah, sure. You know, it came as a bit of a surprise, although not completely. There had been reporting earlier in the week that it was possible. But you know, I guess the first thing I'd say is I'm a millennial, I'm 32 and there's jokes on the internet that people my age make about just wishing we could live in precedent in times instead of always unprecedented times. And so sort of just goes to that sentiment that, you know, the world is changing right now and different things are happening and so big news events seem to be the norm. And you know, as far as the actual decision Joe Biden made to drop out, I definitely understand. I watched the debate the same as everyone else did. And you know, the debate wasn't a huge surprise to me. If you've been following the news, he's taken a step back over the last few years. And so it wasn't a huge surprise really in that light. And I think, you know, it was a decision that he had to make in the end because the primary was already over and so he made it.
And it looks like Kamala Harris will be in line to be the nominee for the Democratic Party. Do you have any thoughts about that?
Yeah, so I saw this morning that it looks like a majority of delegates pledged to her and so that sounds like she'll win on the first ballot at the Democratic Convention. I think it's something that the Democratic Party desperately needed, as you can see from the excitement when it comes to fundraising. They had the best small dollar fundraising day in the history of campaign fundraising. Some energy was definitely needed on the Democratic side to be able to overcome the malaise that had sort of set in and the lack of excitement. And so really looking forward to what the campaigning actually brings since they've raised all this money. Joe Biden had been spending tons of money in swing states and not making a difference. And so now we'll see a new campaign, a new candidate spending all that money. And I think it'll start to move people and we'll start to have a real conversation about what the country would look like under a completely different president than the two that were running previously.
Our guest is St. Petersburg City Council member Richie Floyd. And before we get to talk about the Rays stadium, maybe I should ask you to remind people what your background is. Tell us a little bit more about what you did before you were a member of St. Pete City Council.
Yeah, sure. So before, my background is actually in engineering. I have a bachelor's and a master's degree in electrical engineering and I worked in that field for seven or eight years. But right before I became a city council member, I actually became a public school teacher. I taught in an engineering magnet program in a public school for a year, a little bit over a year through the pandemic. It was a very difficult job. I learned a lot about how kids who go to a Title I school live in the world and it was really eye opening, most difficult job I've ever had. And throughout my time as an engineer and especially as my time as a teacher, I was an activist. I worked on issues. I was one of the lead volunteer organizers for the Fight for Fifteen in 2020 and participated in all sorts of local issues as well. And so that's kind of how I ended up running for office was my activism that I did in my spare time led me to look for someone to run for my city council members seat as she was term limited. And I think that looking sort of backfired because it ended up that everyone just insisted that I do it. So ran for office, ran a grassroots campaign, raised small dollar donations. Our average donation was about $25, $27. If you're familiar with Bernie, it was very similar to that. Had more contributions than every other campaign in the city combined. Knocked on like 30,000 doors, absolutely wore my shoes out and was able to get elected in the end.
And so you were one of the three members that voted against the deal last Thursday. Five of your colleagues supported the development deal that was brokered by the Tampa Bay Rays and their development partner Heinz to build a city, a new stadium and redevelop the historic gas plant district on about 86 acres near downtown St. Pete. And we'll probably throw in, throw around a lot of numbers during this interview, but let's start to break the costs of this stadium and redevelopment deal down. The total public and private investment is expected to be about $6.5 billion?
Yeah, I think that's what's been estimated. I can't say for sure the private side, what's actually going to happen there, but the public side is significant.
Yeah, and so let's just take the stadium part of this. The stadium itself will cost about $1.3 billion and the Rays will contribute $700 million to their own stadium. That means that there's a lot that the public has to make up, including the taxpayers of St. Petersburg. How would you break that down for us?
So, you know, just to explain the numbers, I think it's about 300 million from the county and 287.5 million from the city. And the city's contribution is coming from a variety of sources, but ultimately it's your tax dollars. And that 287.5 million turns into about 500 million when you factor in the interest that we're going to pay on the project over the next 30 years. So yeah, over 30 years, about $500 million from the city. And that's been what my main contention was with the agreement is that, you know, there's no evidence that stadiums are a good investment for cities. As a matter of fact, the last study I saw said that people should stop studying the issue because it's settled science. If you want to create economic impact in a city, you might as well put a Macy's because that's, they have just as much economic impact as a professional sports stadium does. And so when St. Pete has so many needs and can spend this $500 million however it pleases, this is not tourist tax dollars, I just can't justify spending so much money on a baseball stadium.
Our guest is St. Petersburg City Council member Richie Floyd. He was one of three city council members to vote against the Rays and Heinz deal with the city to build a new stadium and the new redevelopment around what's called the historic gas plant district. And so part of the deal, once this is, is finished, and we'll get to the remaining hurdles in a moment, but the Rays will get the ticket sales, the concessions, the naming rights and the broadcast money for, from, through this deal. The city will no longer get a share of ticket sales. So even though the city of St. Petersburg is contributing a lot to, to the perch, to the construction, that is, of this new baseball stadium, the city's actually losing out because currently during the deal that ends in 2027, the city gets, I think it's 50 cents per person who goes through the turnstiles.
Yeah, in this new agreement, we get absolutely no revenue at all. Zero revenue from the stadium, zero revenue from tickets, parking. We don't even get to name the stadium and, and we don't get the money from naming the stadium, even though it's publicly owned. And so that's been a big contention for a lot of people. There's no revenue sharing. We're putting money in and nothing's coming back to us. And so when you focus specifically on the stadium, it's a big, big issue. And you know, there's a broader development around it, but there's no reason we couldn't get a broader development around it without subsidizing the stadium. And so that's, that's been what a lot of people have been upset about and continue to point out throughout this process.
And you're a critic and so I want to let other voices come into this conversation. Our reporter Chris Young reported on this story the other day, so let's hear his minute long story and we'll hear some reaction from Mayor Ken Welch, who was very excited about this deal. So here is our reporter, Chris Young, his story from last Thursday after the vote.
Members of the audience applauded after the vote was made. St. Pete Mayor Ken Welch, who grew up in the historic gas plant district, is a big supporter of the deal.
As to the stadium agreement, far from being an unreasonable subsidy or giveaway, it is a major win for our city.
The vote came after an hours long workshop with the city council on Tuesday. There, city administration fielded questions on topics ranging from the stadium sustainability to affordable housing in the district. Public commentators had mixed feelings about the deal. Member Richie Floyd explained why he voted against the deal.
Hundreds of millions of dollars for a stadium is not in the public's interest and every community benefit in this agreement is a literal crumb compared to the money that we are spending on the stadium.
But city council chair Deborah Fig Sanders says she supports the deal, but still wants there to be oversight.
And I'm still going to hold us accountable on the city level to ensure that this is going to be one of the greatest deals that the city of St. Petersburg has ever seen come to fruition.
The Pinellas County Commission is scheduled to vote July 30th. Chris Young, WMNF News.
So there we have it. We heard that the mayor's really happy, some of the city council members like Deborah Fig Sanders, very happy. They're saying it's a great day for St. Petersburg. This development will change the city in a good way. And then we heard, of course, your criticism that, that the stadium subsidy might not be the best way to go. So, you know, can you see any upside? I mean, it looks like this is moving forward. It's going to happen. Are you, you know, is there, is there an upside to this or what can people kind of be vigilant about to, to make sure that things are going in the right direction?
So there's two parts of this. One is there's a stadium agreement and the other part is there's a broader development. I have no problem with there being a broader, broader development. As a matter of fact, I think we need a broader development. The way the land is put out in our city right now, just a large parking lot that's empty most of the time is not in our city's best interest. My contention this whole time has been we can get the broader development without the stadium. Well, unfortunately I wasn't successful in arguing that before the rest of city council, but we are going to get a broader development and that broader development could have really positive impacts on the city outside of the stadium money. And so I definitely want people to pay attention to that because there was another agreement that we haven't touched on yet that's laid out what we were going to get in the development that comes around the stadium. And there's some pitfalls to it for sure. You know, we need to make sure that we're actually getting the things that were promised in it, the affordable housing, the jobs, the green space. And so that's where our fight still lies going ahead. It's going to be difficult because we laid out the terms of it already, but significant oversight by city council and the city itself will go a long way to making sure that we actually get what we were promised there. And I think that's where the battle is and that's where good things could happen and we'll just have to see.
What's the bare minimum, I guess, for the requirement for the, for Heinz and the Rays to build out affordable housing in this area? I've, I've heard some critics say that, well, there's, there are some ways that they can get out of it. Let's say weasel out of it perhaps by, you know, just paying fines to not get enough affordable housing. But what's kind of the bare minimum and then what would be an optimal amount of affordable housing in this area?
So unfortunately, I think that the conversation around what the fines they have to pay to get out of it has been misdirected in that there's no affordable housing laid out in this deal. All this deal does is say, you know, the developer hopes to create this kind of affordable housing and they will create it if they are successful in receiving more subsidies from local state and federal sources. And so if we can't afford to give them more subsidy and they're unsuccessful in getting subsidies from other state and federal sources, then the affordable housing doesn't have to be built at all. And so that has been my biggest contention around the broader development is that they promised us, I think 600 units of affordable housing. There gets to be this misnomer around affordable and workforce housing. Workforce housing is not affordable. A two bedroom apartment at workforce housing rates is $2,500 a month, two and a half times what, you know, a typical mortgage is for someone who bought a house five years ago. And so when it comes down to just affordable housing, it's 600 units and only 200 of them onsite. And there's ways for them to get out of it if we don't give them more subsidies. And so, yeah, I think the conversation hasn't actually been sharp enough on that particular issue. You know, my hope is that we can create enough pressure to force them to do the right thing regardless of subsidy, but it's going to be a battle because of the way the documents lined out, laid out.
Our guest is St. Petersburg City Council member Richie Floyd. And we're talking about Thursday's vote that approved the redevelopment of the historic gas plant district that includes a new stadium for the Tampa Bay Rays. I'm Sean Canaan and this is Tuesday Cafe. We're broadcasting from the studios of WMNF in Tampa. We're live on July 23rd and if you'd like to weigh in by sending us an email, you can do it at dj@wmnf.org. You can text us at 813-433-0885. And later on in the show, we're going to take your phone calls to find out what you think about the latest developments in national politics with President Joe Biden dropping out of the presidential race. Right now we're talking about the, the Rays stadium deal and what that means for the city of St. Petersburg. So it's, in addition to the stadium, the, the city, St. Pete, has to also pay for infrastructure, about $142 million for roads, sewers and other infrastructure in and around this development. So does that mean that there's some sort of choice that the, that the city makes in how it, in, in what it uses that money for? Or is it just kind of all laid out in the development that it has to go for these roads and, and things just to service the stadium and this historic gas plant district, Richie?
Yeah, so, yeah, as of right now, that 142 million, it's not been earmarked for specific projects within the development, but it is for the development. And so as time goes on, we'll see the developer actually doing the work and they get to draw down a bank account that we basically filled with that money for them. We will soon fill that money for them and they will just be able to draw down on it to build the actual infrastructure to city standards. And, you know, there's other subsidies in there as well. The interest on the bank account goes directly to them. It doesn't go back to the city. You know, we had talked about 130 million and then at the last, in the last few months, it got moved up to 142. So there's some details there to be worked out. I actually think one of the most important aspects of it to know, for the public to know is the money that the city's expending is what gets, is, is outlaid first. So it might not be spent first, but we are going to give the money to them immediately and then there's no getting it back at that point. So we'll see what happens. Hopefully I'm optimistic now at this point, because I have to be, that everything will go smoothly. But we expend our funds for the stadium, for the infrastructure, and then they have to build and our funds are gone at that point. And so if there's some issues, you know, we're going to have a tough time coming to terms with it. There's some rules around the infrastructure money that we could then reallocate it to a different infrastructure in the city, but it's spent at that point.
And the, some of the money that's going to be going toward this stadium and redevelopment project is by extending the in-town CRA. So let our listeners know what the CRA is, where the geographical boundaries of this in-town CRA are and what it means to extend this. It was not going to be forever, was it?
No, so the in-town CRA, it's also called a tax increment financing district, is basically an imaginary line drawn around downtown. And so downtown area, including the Tropicana Field area are within this bubble. And in that bubble, when you do a tax increment financing district or district or a community redevelopment area, what happens is all of the taxes that get collected there, starting when the bubble's drawn, all the new taxes that get collected there stay in that area. They have to. And so in the eighties, they did this because they wanted to create a fund to invest in downtown, to get downtown to become more vibrant. And so it's technically used for blighted areas. It was extended once. It's supposed to only last for 30 years and it was extended once to 2032 so that they could continue to draw upon it and invest in downtown. Well, we just extended it again to 2042 and this was actually one of the things that I think wasn't highlighted a lot, but was really impactful and I really disagreed with. Downtown is not a blighted area. It's the most wealthy area of our entire city. If you've ever looked out into your neighborhood and been like, wow, we really need investments in our infrastructure here, there's flooding, the roads are crumbling, we don't have as many nice things as the nicest area in the city downtown. Part of that reason is because we're trapping the area with the most wealth. We're trapping all that wealth in that area. And it was a huge, I, I just don't find it just at all that we would continue to invest in an area that already has so much when our neighborhoods need so much more investment. And I was really optimistic that we would be able to end this ERA district ahead of time. And when this deal got rolled out and they said, we're going to extend it, it was very frustrating for me and I know very frustrating for a lot of community activists who want to see our entire city thrive and not just downtown where there's condos and high rises that, to be honest, aren't for people like me. I can't afford to live there and no one I know can afford to live there. And so it's been very frustrating.
Another concerning issue has to do with where the, the parking lots are at the Trop right now, which is where the new stadium will be built, just east, that is, of the Tropicana Field. There are suspected or possible cemeteries there. What do we know about what might be underneath the parking lot of Tropicana Field?
Yeah, I think you described it accurately. Like it's, it's suspected that there are cemeteries there and, and I think you could maybe take it another step and say it's, it's expected to find some evidence of that. And so the agreement does lay out that due diligence has to be done, not only to check, but then to handle it appropriately. And so there will be, I think, I can't speak exactly to the science of it, but there will be efforts made to go and examine what's underneath the parking lots before we continue to do the building and either relocate or honor those who were buried there in some way. And so I do think that was something that was absolutely necessary to get put into the agreement and I was glad to see.
Another thing that's in the agreement is that the Rays and Heinz will contribute $10 million toward an Woodson African American Museum, but the price of that museum is expected to be a lot more than that. So where would the rest of the funds come from?
So the rest of the funds will have to come from a fundraising effort by the museum itself. In the agreement with Rays and Heinz, they did say that they will help fundraise for it. They'll provide contacts and whatnot. And so hopefully that means we'll get the museum as early as possible. And, you know, my contention with this whole agreement is I, it's great that we're going to have a museum. It's great that we're going to have this green space. It's great that we're going to get hopefully some affordable housing. But like I've said before, and I'll say again, all of those things combined are a fraction of what we're going to spend on a baseball stadium. A baseball stadium that's owned, that's going to be run by a billionaire and not going to return any revenue to the city. That stadium could be paid for with private funds and we could spend our money actually getting things instead of feeling like we're gambling to get a museum. We could just have bought a museum. And so that's where my contention has been this whole time. I am optimistic that we will get the things that we've said we're going to get, particularly the museum, but it's going to require work from people in the city still.
The Southern Poverty Law Center had kind of threatened to say that if this deal does go through, if there is a stadium built, that there will be civil rights violations and that, that they could end up taking legal action to prevent something like that. What do you know about the possibility of that happening and what their concerns are?
I did read their letter. It sounds like their argument is that there was civil rights violations done whenever we originally built the stadium. We bought the, bought the houses in the area with funds that were supposed to be spent on social goods, block grants from the federal government that are supposed to go towards lifting people out of poverty, assistance to the poor. And instead we bought that land with those funds and then built a baseball stadium, which was a civil rights violation and that the continued use of the land as a baseball stadium and now this agreement to sell the land to a private entity for way under market value and continue to use a piece of it for a baseball stadium is a continued civil rights violation. And so that's the way I understand what they're saying. I think I follow their logic and so I don't know it, I can't comment on whether or not someone's going to take legal action against the city. I really don't know, but it's possible that they do in the future if they feel so inclined.
And you mentioned that the, that we're selling, that we, that the city is selling the land for under value. What do we know about how much the land was sold for and how much it might be worth?
So there was an appraisal a couple of years ago that said the land was worth 279 million and we ended up selling it for about 100 million. That was a problem in and of itself, but I think there has been evidence since land downtown selling for 14 to 20 million dollars an acre. And we sold this land for a fraction of that. And even the appraisal was only for a couple million dollars an acre, a few million dollars an acre. And so, you know, there's an argument to be made that if it was to sell for the same price as downtown, it could be worth as much as 500 to 800 million dollars and we sold it for only 100 million. And I think, yeah, along with the stadium subsidy, that is an absolutely huge problem. And that's why I've been describing this whole agreement as a large transfer of wealth from the private, or from the public sector to the private sector. It's, that's why I've been using the word subsidy, using the words corporate welfare. And unfortunately this is par for the course in a lot of cities when it comes to sports developments. And I'm not just one lone voice saying this is no, this is not good. There was other council members, but there's a whole movement across the country of people saying, we're not interested in subsidizing things this way anymore. And I think things are coming to light, but it's still a big battle because to be honest, the sports teams and the corporations that get these deals are heavily involved in campaigning. They donate a lot of money to candidates. They make sure that their people win and then they give people free suite tickets afterwards. They do these deals. And so there's a lot of incentive for elected officials to continue to do these kinds of deals and it's going to take like a grassroots movement to push back against it.
Richie, I've taken up a lot of your time already and I want to wrap up soon, but I do, I am seeing that there's a couple of people on the line that want to talk about the Rays stadium. Do you have time to take a couple of calls?
Yeah, absolutely. I can hang out.
All right, great. Well, thanks so much. So I want to remind people that our guest is St. Petersburg City Council member Richie Floyd. And we're talking about Thursday's vote approving the redevelopment of the historic gas plant district that includes a new stadium for the Tampa Bay Rays. I'm Sean Canaan and this is Tuesday Cafe. We're broadcasting from the studios of WMNF in Tampa. We're taking phone calls now live on July 23rd and on the line right now is Connie in Tampa. Hi Connie, welcome to the show.
Thank you, and I want to thank the councilman for his courage and leadership. And what you see even with the layout of these CRAs that's supposed to help redevelop impoverished communities, the hijacking of them, how they become a new form of redlining. And so no, the workforce housing, the affordable housing, housing for poor people, irrespective of this Tampa or St. Petersburg, the leadership, the absolute leadership that is primarily led by the Democratic Party is so, so disappointing, but I want to thank him for his leadership and his effort. Thank you.
Thanks for the call Connie.
Thank you.
She called it a new form of redlining. Is that, and is that how you might describe it as well?
You know, that's strong language, but I can't disagree for the most part. It's not trapping people out or in by race, the way redlining did, but it's trapping people out and in by class for sure. Working class people, I mentioned it before, cannot afford to live downtown. It's become prohibitively, prohibitively expensive for us to even develop downtown, for us to develop affordable housing downtown, to the point where we're having to look elsewhere. And, you know, that's not a just thing to do and it's become prohibitively expensive because of all the money that we've pumped into the area that could be going towards other places. And so, yeah, I, I think that there's definitely a relevant analogy there.
And before we go to this next phone call, And before we go to this next phone call, which might be the last one, we talk about the, the Rays, I want to remind people that we're going to open up the phones in just a few seconds to talk about all the news that's happening in national politics. So if you'd like to get in the queue right now, you can call in at 813-239-9663. You can email dj@wmnf.org like Peter has already done. Or you can text us at 813-813-433-0885. And about two or, oh, you know, we had somebody drop off the line. So we'll, we'll open up the phone lines in just a second, I promise. But let me ask Richie, the last question I had for him, and that's the next steps for this project. It's going to go to the Pinellas County Commission for a vote. They could vote as soon as next Tuesday. I haven't heard any news about whether that will or won't be delayed yet. And, and the subsidies continue. The Pinellas County is going to vote on contributing 312 million dollars from the tourist tax. So if, if there are any Pinellas County commissioners listening to this or can get word from, what would be your advice to them? What should they be looking for in this contract? And whether you think that this is a good deal for Pinellas County taxpayers, Richie?
So the county's version of this agreement is much more simple than the city's. It's basically just, here's 312 million dollars, build a stadium. There's no information about what gets built around it. They do have a little bit of money coming back to them in the form of like a million dollars a year or something like that for a lease agreement. And ultimately though, it ends up being about 300 million dollars expended over the next 30 years. Depending on how they do their bonds and what their down payment is, it's going to be a lot more money than that. And it comes from tourist tax dollars, which must be spent on tourist issues. And so it's a much more simple conversation, but I would definitely encourage county commissioners to still think deeply about if this is the right thing to use tax dollars on. Those tax dollars come from people staying in hotels. And hotels are used by people who are coming to visit the area. And not a lot of people actually come to visit the area for baseball. I think it's something like, I actually don't know where it falls on the list, but the highest things on the list are, you know, the Dali Museum, the St. Peter, the beaches, those are things people actually come here for. Baseball is much lower down on the list. And so definitely evaluate if you think this is the best thing to actually increase tourism in the city. In the county, one. And two, I would really encourage county commissioners to get more creative about how they spend these dollars. There's an argument to be made. And I know the county hasn't wanted to make it, but other places have that you can spend it on infrastructure and transit that supports tourism related projects. And you can definitely spend it on revenue generating tourism projects. So projects that actually give money back to the county. And right now they're choosing to do one that's not revenue generating. And so I definitely think they should think deeply about it, not just this project, but how they use tourism money in the future completely.
Well, I want to thank you very much for coming on WMNF's Tuesday Cafe, Richie.
Thanks so much for having me. I really appreciate it. I always enjoy it.
Thanks. I'm glad you could come on. Richie Floyd is a St. Petersburg City Council Member. He voted against approving the contracts between the city of St. Pete and the Tampa Bay Rays that approved a new baseball stadium in the historic gas plant district redevelopment. This is Tuesday Cafe. We're broadcasting from the studios of WMNF Tampa and we're live on the 23rd of July.